Dale, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, oral call, please.
Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair.
Present.
Commissioner.
Present.
Commissioner.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
All present, two vacancies.
Okay, do we have any oral communication requests on things not on the agenda?
No.
We do not, okay. The first item on our agenda is Planning Commission Minutes from December fourth. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at those?
So move to accept the minutes from December fourth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Second.
Second.
Hold on real quick, my thing is still lagging. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And we'll go with our first item on the agenda.
All right, good evening Chair, Planning Commissioners. So tonight before you, an applicant has requested the Planning Commission review and consider conditional development permit twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one eight. Okay, so the proposed site is located within the Foothill Boulevard specific plan. It is generally located on the northwest corner of Lilac Avenue and Foothill Boulevard. The land use designation there is commercial pedestrian. The full shopping center there comprised of about four or five parcels are all in the Foothill Boulevard similarity zone or land use designation of commercial pedestrian. See here. Okay, so the proposal before the commission tonight is as required by chapter eighteen sixty-six, the establishment and operation of a discount, single-price overstock store requires a conditional development permit, and the applicant has filed that. So this floor plan actually shows there's a vacant tenant retail space in the shopping center today, roughly about thirty-two hundred square foot. This is the floor plan layout that, you know, he's going to install. They have their aisles and displays, as well as some storage in the back, and the associated restroom and lounge area. As mentioned, you know, eighteen sixty-six requires a conditional development permit for the establishment of this discount overstock. And this is consistent not only with the condition, oh sorry, commercial pedestrian land use of the Foothill Boulevard specific plan, but the general plan goal three dash one. This shopping center actually includes other similarly establishments for retail and services, including the credit union, gas station, and this will, as mentioned before, replace a vacant retail space to provide an alternative shopping experience for the local residents. This project is exempt from SEQA, its existing facilities, so class one, and Planning Commission, sorry, the staff's recommendation is that Planning Commission determine this project is categorically exempt and to adopt the attached resolution exhibit D for the conditional development permit twenty twenty-four zero zero one eight, subject to the conditions and findings therein. The applicant is available tonight, in case you have any questions, and the staff is also available too.
Okay. We'll go and open the public hearing and then bring the applicant up, and we'll see if staff or commissioners have any questions first. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak, sir, or you don't have to, but I'm... Do you have any questions of him, gentlemen? No, okay, no problem. Is there any requests to speak on this item? You know, actually, I do have a couple of questions for you, sir, if you come on up here, I thought about it a bit more. So what types of overstock items are you going to be selling in here?
Walmart, Costco, we buy it like ballot, and we make it individual, put it on the shelf with very low prices.
Oh, okay.
You have one, one full-time employee?
Sorry?
You have one full-time employee?
Yeah.
And a couple of part-times?
Yeah, we have two full-time.
Two part-timers?
Two full-time. What, um, do you have any other similar stores around here?
No.
Is your first store?
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
No other, you have no other requests?
Move to adopt the attached resolution. Motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, any opposed, okay, now.
Move to adopt the attached resolution, exhibit D to approve conditional development permit number two zero two four, subject to finds and conditions therein.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, thank you. We kept Bob busy. All right, thanks, Dave.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners, I'll be making the presentation on the second public hearing item tonight, which is entitled the Rialto and Linden Industrial Warehouse Project.
Wow, another warehouse.
Its file numbers for reference are variance number twenty twenty-four zero 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 two, conditional development permit number twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 nine, precise plan of design number twenty twenty-four zero zero one seven, and environmental assessment review number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two four, excuse me. The applicant is Stewart Development LLC. And here on this slide, you can see the location of the project site. It's highlighted there in the red boundary. It's comprised of one parcel of land that is approximately two point one three acres in size. It's located at the southwest corner of Rialto Avenue and Linden Avenue. It is within the light industrial general plan land use district, and then also it's with, its zoning designation is general manufacturing M two. What the applicant proposes to do on the project site is to construct a forty-two thousand square foot industrial warehouse building. This is not a spec building, as we often see, this one actually does have a tenant, Nace Holdings LLC, which is a furniture company, so they would be doing some minor assembly and distribution of furniture.
Will there be point of sale there, do you know?
We can ask that of the applicant, yes. I do also want to note one thing, the commission may be aware recently of a moratorium on warehouses that the council had adopted on January twenty-eighth. That moratorium exempts warehouse developments that are under a hundred thousand square feet in size, so at forty-two thousand square feet, this is, this is exempt from that moratorium. Just wanted to make sure that it's on the record. And this next slide, I want to show you the site design proposed by the applicant. They're proposing to place the building kind of towards the northeast corner of the site, would be closer to the intersection of Rialto Avenue and Linden Avenue. The building setbacks that they're proposing, I'm showing you there on the slide primarily the north and the west, and the reason for that is that on the north side of Rialto Avenue there is an existing apartment complex, if we could see back on the, uh, the project
Yeah, the black rooftop?
Yep, and then to the west is another apartment complex as well. The applicant's proposal has a setback of a hundred forty-two feet to the apartments to the north, and eighty-four feet to the apartments to the west. And then on the east side, they're showing a twenty-five foot setback along the Linden Avenue frontage, and I'll get to that a little later. But just going more over their layout here, they've got a truck court that would be on the south side of the building, primarily really there at the southeast corner of the building, that the building will shield that truck activity from those residents at the apartment complex to the west. And then passenger vehicle parking area will be on the west side of the building, between the apartment complex and the building, kind of help buffer the building to the apartments. That parking area will, will have spaces for up to thirty-six passenger vehicles, and the truck court will accommodate just a maximum of three trucks and trailers. There will be two driveways providing access to this site, I've shown them there with the red arrows on the site plan. The, um, the arrow there on the top is a driveway connected to Rialto Avenue, and that'll be a thirty-foot wide driveway that is limited to passenger vehicles only, no trucks, again, to prevent any trucks from driving alongside those apartments to the west. And then that red arrow kind of at the lower right of your slide is a driveway proposed to be connected to Linden Avenue, thirty-five feet wide, that's the driveway for the trucks, so they would enter, enter into Linden and back into the truck court where they'll be, like I said, shielded from the building, by the building, and then they pull back out onto Linden when they're leaving. Just showing you a rendering of the exterior design of the building. This building will feature significant wall plane articulation both horizontally and vertically. There'll be offset wall panels with depth changes of up to three feet, as well as vertical height variations of also up to three feet, the building height will range from thirty-three feet up to a maximum of thirty-six feet. This will be a concrete tilt-up building painted with four different colors, you've got a few different gray tones, white is the primary color, and then there's also like a brownish kind of accent. Generous amounts of glazing, panel reveals, and metal eyebrow accents also on all four sides of the building. Next slide is showing you the landscape plan, the proposed landscape coverage is eighteen point four percent, which is well over the ten percent minimum requirement, and that's primarily coming from a thirty-two foot landscape setback along Rialto Avenue and a twenty-five foot landscape setback along Linden Avenue. Applicant will also install landscaping in the public parkways on each street frontage, and all the planters, both onsite and offsite, will have drought tolerant plants, trees every thirty of the near feet, and an abundant amount of shrubs and ground cover. As I mentioned before, there was a twenty-five foot setback proposed along Linden Avenue, and if you, as I mentioned earlier, there's also a variance filed for this project. The variance that was filed was specifically for that setback along Linden Avenue. The municipal code, specifically chapter eighteen one twelve, requires a setback along street frontages of one foot for every foot of height. This is the building, height is thirty-six feet, that equates to a thirty-six foot setback, however, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce that setback to twenty-five feet. The reason for that is primarily because of the residents to the west. The applicant, in coordination with staff, wanted to be able to shift the building as far as possible east away from the residents, and so at twenty-five foot setback, this allowed the layout to have the passenger vehicle parking between the building and the, and the apartments maximizing the setback between, so that's the reason for it, and staff recommends the approval of that variance, again, just to ensure that we can maximize the setback of the building to the residents. There was a traffic study prepared for the project by LSA Associates, it estimated a trip generation of up to seventy-two daily vehicle trips, twenty, up to twenty-nine of those would be truck trips, and up to forty-three would be passenger vehicle trips, with a maximum of seven trips in the AM peak hour and eight in the PM peak hour. The study determined that all the nearby intersections and roadway segments will continue to operate at an acceptable level of service, so there are no improvements necessary to maintain that level of service. In terms of California Environmental Quality Act for this project, there was an initial study prepared also by LSA, the determination from that was a mitigated negative declaration. The initial study, M and D, was circulated for a thirty-day, thirty-day public review period from December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, no comment letters were received during that time period. The project before you tonight, just kind of summarizing, is consistent with the M two zone, it's also consistent with chapter eighteen one twelve of the Rialto Municipal Code, which regulates warehouse developments, with the exception of the setback along Linden Avenue, as I mentioned, which is primarily intended to maximize the setback between the residents. And this development will also be consistent with existing industrial uses to both the east and the south of the site. The environmental studies that were prepared and are before you tonight concluded that the project will be less than significant with the incorporation of mitigation measures that were cited in the attached mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The project will serve to develop and improve an industrial site with the highest and best use allowed in the M two zone, and then staff did mail public hearing notices to all property owners within a thousand feet of the project site, and that notice was published in the San Bernardino Sun newspaper. Staff has not received any responses in advance of tonight's meeting from sending out those notices. And with that, the Planning Division recommends that the commission adopt the resolutions before you approving the project. That concludes my presentation, if you have any questions, staff or the applicant are available.
Let's go ahead and open the public comments now first, and maybe we can get the applicant up here and ask some questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Greg Lord, Stewart Development, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Uh, will it be any point of sale in this warehouse?
You know, I, I didn't think to ask that until I heard you say it. I should know that, I can find out and get that to Daniel.
Yeah, we would like, I mean, obviously, we would like some sort of point of sale for the city of Rialto, because these warehouses aren't generating anything for the residents for sales tax revenue.
Yeah, this one's a little different, because half of that interior space is workers at tables putting pieces together and all that, so it's not just a straight warehouse like some of these are.
Yeah, so that's what I was asking, because you're more like a manufacturing warehouse, where you might have a point of sale, like a fill an online order, that would be a point of sale in the city of Rialto, and that might help with revenue.
Yeah.
The other, um, if you could, obviously, again, it's still America, you run your business the way you want to, but that's beneficial to the city if that were a point of sale, but the other questions, um, and maybe Daniel too, on the lighting, how is the lighting going to be situated adjacent to the residents on those apartment complexes, are we, is there mitigating steps going to be made?
Yes, good question, Chair. There are conditions of approval in the resolution that limit the height of any light holes, and then also require that all the lighting be directed away and shielded if necessary so that no light spills onto the adjacent properties.
And surveillance cameras won't be at the, pointing at the residents' houses?
Also that too, yes.
Remember, we had that one guy who's concerned about his daughter in the pool?
Yes.
Adjacent to warehouse, we don't want stuff like that. The, the other thing, um, hours of operation.
Hours of operation would be eight to six, eight in the morning till six at night.
So not a lot of activity going late at night with these?
No, there's a dozen people work there, so, at least to start with.
Since you only have parking for three trucks, this is going to be mostly used for manufacturing, right?
Yeah, the assembly of the stuff and breaking down, you know, if they, if they get a hundred table legs in one packages, they'll break it down and repackage it to ten or twenty to a package, and then it ships back out.
I see.
So, yeah, they didn't have the need for more than three docks.
That's, that's good. Usually they have fifty or sixty trucks or something.
Oh, Frank, you have something, buddy?
My question is, we, um, I understand when they, when Daniel said about the warehouse moratorium, they mentioned the setback, what's the buffer zone for residents around that area? Because I'm not sure that that's.
I can answer that, yep. So currently, the municipal code requires a buffer or setback of one foot for every foot of building height. So this building is thirty-six feet tall, so the minimum required setback for the municipal code is thirty-six feet from, from the residential. However, staff, working together with the applicant, we've managed to maximize that setback to eighty-four feet, so over double the requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Any other question? Oh, you know, the other thing, on one of the streets, it looks like the glazing is rather limited, can you, can you, can we look at adding more glazing on that one side, unless this render is not accurate? You have a lot of glazing on one side, maybe the other side, and make it less like a huge concrete building there.
I think you're, yeah, you're talking about on the left side of the edge here?
East side, yeah.
Yeah, the east side, a little bit, left side.
Could we add a little bit more to make that more aesthetically pleasing? Would you be open to that, sir?
Yeah, we would be, sure. Yeah. We work with Daniel on that, we've been working with Paul and, and Daniel on that right along, so.
See, it's all full of glazing here, but this side's just concrete. And the plants, they're, they're, what's the requirements on the plant, the gallon size and all that, what do we have going there, Dan?
Yeah, I was saying, this is, this is just a rendering, right, an artistic rendering prepared by the applicant, but the city's conditions are going to require a minimum twenty-four inch box trees every thirty feet along the street frontages, and then five gallon plants, shrubs.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, bud. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Okay, um, anyone request to speak? Any other questions, guys?
I'm good.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Move to adopt the attached resolution exhibit I, J, K, and L, thereby approving the mitigated negative decoration prepared for the project, and thereby approving variance number two zero two four dash zero 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 two, conditional development permit number two zero two four dash zero 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 nine, and precise plan of design number two zero two four dash zero zero one seven, subject to the finds and conditions therein.
Real quick for you to vote, do we need to have a direction in there to work with staff for adding more glazing on the west side, or does that need to be mentioned right now, or no?
We could make a modification to one of the permits, I could add some language in here, to more of the conditions on your P P D, which would be a resolution, um, number or X, is it XL, or excuse me, just L, I believe would be the appropriate place of the condition?
Daniel, do you know the architectural?
Yeah, sure, exactly, I can, if you, if you put that in your motion to add additional glazing on the east side of the building facing Linden, I'll go back and amend the resol for you.
Can you add that on there, buddy?
I'll make a motion that we add the, uh...
Additional glazing on the east side?
Mm-hmm.
Any or second?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good luck to you, sir. Appreciate, we, we like anything other than a big box that's not doing anything, but shipping boxes, so appreciate it.
Manufacturing is good.
Yeah, that's good, we want manufacturing jobs.
Fact, you might even sell something, brother.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping they do. Okay, I hope, we have, um, I think your comments, right?
Thank you, I just thank the Chair and Commissioners. Welcome to the new year.
We're, we're getting out of the gates. I do want to introduce Kristy Lopez, if you haven't met her already, I'm sure you have, at least had a chance to say hello. She's our new land use attorney here for community development, planning, you know, services. I know, you know, Kristy has a boatload of experience, years and years from many, many different cities. We did work together in, in another city a couple of years back, for a couple of years, and she was superb in supporting, you know, the planning staff there and the projects out there. So she'll fit very well in with the team here, with Daniel, Vince in the bag, Paul, and the rest of the team, so, welcome, Kristy. The other thing is, we did hear a little bit about moratorium in some of this discussion here, the project we heard today is, is hardly, is hardly a warehouse with three docks, you know? It is mostly assembly, it's more of a, more considered light industrial in, in the business, and so I'm glad it fits the form in that neighborhood, it's, like Daniel mentioned, we worked hard on that. So the, I appreciate the developer in coming, you know, you know, as far as they did to meet the, to meet the test. The, we do have in, on next Tuesday, we do have, excuse me, the extension of the moratorium for another ten months, that'll be before council. As you know, in January, they approved a forty-five day urgency ordinance.
So next Tuesday?
Yeah, so next Tuesday, there'll be another ten, proposed to be ten months and fifteen days, and that'll give staff some time to work out some code modifications, and then study a number of different, you know, variables around just industrial uses of various properties that do have adjacencies to sensitive receptors like residential communities and things like that, so. We do have an economic development committee meeting that will be coming up, it is tentatively scheduled for March fourth, one o'clock, here in this room, that will be an item, talk about various code updates, but we will talk about the moratorium, and probably have some si, some suggested language to, to start to, you know, as we start to propose and get some feedback from the economic development committee, and then we will certainly have some follow-up meetings with the public to make sure we get proper stakeholder input and things like that.
I wish I could, I, I have to travel out of town next week, that, that's one council meeting I probably would show up to and voice concern there, too.
So, so that, so that's EDC, right, just two council members here, the mayor and the mayor pro town, but we will have, we will have more meetings.
Okay.
Coming after that. It, it will come before the Planning Commission, so when we get the language wrapped up to where we think it looks like a final draft, we'll bring it to the Planning Commission, you will take your actions on it.
Is he gonna, are you gonna be forming an ad hoc group?
No.
No?
No, this will be, this will be staff-led, and we'll schedule, we'll schedule a public meeting to take public, but we know various stakeholders out there, they will include the industry, I mean, they're, they're part of the stakeholder community as well, so it's not just.
We just want to make sure the industry's not the biggest voice in the room, though.
That is true, but, you know, it's not going to be, no one's going to have the only voice.
That's what I'm saying, maybe you want anyone from the commission to sit on that to help, or to?
You know, e- even if you don't come as a commissioner, you certainly come, can come as a resident, of course.
As a citizen, right?
Yeah, come as a resident, yeah, of course.
Question I have for you is, what, how much community involvement do you have when you're planning?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know.
Because as Jerry says, we don't want all industry.
It's not, it, it's, you're right, it, it's not a global outreach to take in the citywide, you know, some citywide approach to this, and I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to, you know, prohibit anyone or eliminate any population out there. We will have, whatever revisions we have, of course, it'll be on our website, of course, it'll be publicly noticed and things like that, and we'll have a public comment period that we can push out, so we can do those types of things that we would do with any policy-type project, but it's not going to be like a town hall meeting or some large community meeting.
It's a committee, yeah, it's a working committee.
Right, so, but it will be staff-led, the council is not intending to, you know, appoint people, appoint residents to anything like this, this is not, that's not the nature of this, but we do want to get good feedback from every, every aspect of the population.
I was happy to hear that, I just, I'm hopeful that it will, it's a meaningful step forward, not just show.
Right.
We gotta make some meaningful adjustments, we have too many, too many, that are, that are right on top of residents.
Yeah, those are, those, those are the pain points.
Yeah.
That's the target that needs to be really, really looked at with a laser focus.
Yeah.
That's the pain point.
Okay.
City, you know.
Yeah.
Throughout.
So, excuse me, let me, for clarification, for me, the, the first meeting is March the fourth?
March fourth is an economic development committee meeting, and so there's probably going to be three different items on that agenda, you have the mayor, and the mayor pro temp sit as the committee, staff will be there to support the items, so you'll see planning staff, myself, Paul. Staff will be there to support the items. So you'll see planning staff, myself, Paul, Christie. And then we'll talk about a couple of land development projects that are probably in the queue, ones you haven't seen yet. Because they could be just, you know, day one, brand new, or they could be somewhere throughout the process. And then we often talk about policy projects in that, in that room as well. And so I think we have a couple of development projects, and then we have a policy update with a number of different code items, moratorium being one of them. But that, that concludes my comments.
Planning Commission?
I had, you had mentioned last year sometime toward the end about training.
Yes.
Welcome in, new attorney.
That's a great question. Katie, let's get a training schedule for planning commissioner events in Southern California that, that we can present to them at the next planning commission meeting.
California League of Cities.
Anyway, we can just say California. California is just all, all together.
The one that's available.
Yeah, you know, I wanted.
I don't need to go up north.
Sometimes they, sometimes they rotate northern, southern.
One more question.
Yes.
When do we meet the new city manager?
Oh, that's, that's a great question. So Tanya Williams has been one at the city for about three years. Assistant city manager for a year. And so she's, you know, a young, you know, bright, you know, talented, you know, individual. And so she's been working with us as the executive team and our colleagues for these last couple of years that I've certainly been here. And so there's good, really good executive team, kind of in its prime here at Rialto. So we're all very pleased to see Tanya elevate into that position. There's, there's another opportunity that just came forward today, the assistant city manager, her former position. So there's Tim Sullivan, who you may know as our public works director here at the city. Tim was, he's been at the city years ago, then he left, went to a city that is lesser than Rialto, but then came back to Rialto. And has been here the last few years. And so Tim now is taking the position as the assistant city manager. So both of them are in those two new spots there. Tanya, I'm sure she would love to be here tonight. She had to leave a little bit earlier today. But we'll see if we can get her to come out then in two weeks at our next planning commission meeting. But there will be event at the council, at one of our next council meetings, that will be a kind of a meet and greet with the city manager.
Right.
So that'll, that'll be advertised. It's probably, I don't think it's next Tuesday, but I think it'll be in, in March.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I can pass on, I wanted to pass on some good work our supervisor, Joe Baca Junior did. I, I had complained, if you can believe that, a while ago when Edison kept cutting the power off for days in the Los Colinas community area because of wind. And I voiced concerns, and he had mentioned he had got some other complaints as well, because it never had happened before in that area. Always the northern end of Fontana right there would be shut down. That's a newer residential area. So what had happened is they had switched, the, there's two power grids that feed Los Colinas. And they had switched us to one that's called the Firebrand that runs through like Lateral Creek and feeds Renaissance. Is that, no, what's, is that Renaissance, the San Marino community in the hill? What is that, those house?
Oh, no, that's a.
What is it called? Rosetta Ranch, I'm sorry. It feeds Rosetta Ranch. So Rosetta Ranch is consistently getting shut off, so that. So I forgot about it, and it was before Christmas, and I asked him if he can at least talk to him. So I follow his Instagram feed, and I saw that he was on a tour. Edison had taken him on a tour. And he had reached back out to me, and Edison has decided to switch the Los Colinas residents back on the main Rialto feed. And we're not going to be part of the public utility shut-off for winds anymore. So I want to give him credit for that, because I wasted money buying a generator, but that's okay, because I'd rather have my electricity on. But Rosetta Ranch, they still can't figure, that's just, it's right there in the middle of that wind tunnel, even worse than where I'm at. But, and I, I think he said he was going to pass it on to the council to share with them, but I want to share with you guys, so that's, I was pretty happy about that.
That's a good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, public utilities, I filed a complaint with the Public Utilities Commission California. They, they had an immediate boomerang response letter of like, thanks for letting us know, but we don't care type of letter. But, yeah, no, because you take for granted when you don't have electricity for three days.
Yeah.
Really quick of how much you need electricity, so I thought I'd pass that on to everybody, and just, I guess I could find out afterwards. Casa Grande, where we're at with the city of Fontana. I guess some of the car plowed into the pillars. I don't know how they're doing it.
I think, well, why don't we get a little update tonight?
Okay, cool.
Okay, I have, I have one announcement here. We, we do have a new city engineer that has been recently hired. And so we've been without one for a long time.
Okay.
I think we stole him from Highland or something like that. Highland, yeah. So Matt, Matt Bennett?
Hey, how are you?
Hey, Vince, can you come up too?
Vince too, Vince is my guy too.
Well, I have a, I have a gotcha question right here.
Yeah, he, I always ask him if I might see him, but I haven't asked him today yet.
So, so, so Matt, so Matt comes with a wealth of experience. He can give himself an introduction. And then Vince, could you answer the question around Casa Grande when that's going to open up with Fontana?
Chairman, planning commission, happy to be here, excited, joining a great group, dedicated individuals in second week. I've come in over from the city of Highland, city of Woldmars, the York of Linda, and public works engineering throughout. And I dropped in to this meeting to meet you all and, and hopefully help and go forward. I think Vince is, is taking great care of the whole group, and, and I think all, the board, and all the, the volleyball.
Thank you. Vince is awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you, Matt, for being my attorney, Harris and fellow commissioners. Yes, Matt's joining us with a big relief, so, so much needed, so we're, we're happy to have him here. In terms of Casa Grande, I guess the question is when it's opening?
Yeah, and if we're going to do the four lanes and get rid of the obstacle course and all that.
That is the ultimate plan, to have two lanes in each direction.
Okay.
And tie it into Fontana. But currently, Fontana, Casa Grande, between the city limits and Sierra is closed, only on the outside.
Oh, that's right, they're waiting on the signal.
Yes, so even at the, at the east leg of the intersection of Sierra and Casa Grande, it's closed.
Okay.
And we are coordinating with Font, the city of Fontana. We have sent them our plans. They have both the strike signing and striping plans, as well as some minor improvements
Yeah.
between the city limit and Alder, no, yes, Alder to Alder. So we are coordinating, I don't have an exact timeframe. I know that bids were closed.
Okay.
Going through that process now, selecting. It's getting close, but I don't have an exact date.
Yeah.
I'll make sure next time it gets.
No problem, you can. I think they're waiting, I forgot, you're right, they're waiting on that signal. I, the most important thing to me is that we return it back, for, get rid of the road diet. Because we're trying to solve a problem with another problem, the, the target employees. But if they have another egress out of this, the community, and then, because it's getting dangerous. I mean, I've, I've already voiced too many times, but the cars are avoiding the cones, running around them, doing illegal U-turns, and driving on the opposite side of the road to get through Los Colinas. So I think we just get rid of the road diet. When we do, that'd be the best, and it sounds like that's what you guys are doing.
That is what they're doing.
Yeah.
Two lanes in each direction, all the way to, hopefully, if we get Fontana.
Oh, that'd be great. That'd be awesome.
That'd be great.
Yeah, the only suggestion I made, I'm surprised PD hasn't recommended it yet, so, as you guys know, I, I have a buddy that lives, his house is behind that. So those, for some reason, I don't know what it is, but people with Google Maps, or they're driving too fast or racing, they're running into the concrete pillar head-on, cars are flipping. You've had at least once a month. Maybe they put something on those pillars, like reflectors? Because if you look at it at night, you don't see those pillars, you see the lights. It's kind of like a mirage. So it happens quite a bit. I think it's kind of humorous, but eventually someone's going to get hurt, and that's not going to be humorous.
And we'll make it over that and work with our, our mains.
Yeah, that's the only, that's, yeah, that probably would maybe save a life.
When you see pillars, the K rails.
The K rails, I'm saying. Yeah, the K rails are, you don't see them when it's at night. But maybe just put some on the K rail there, so they can at least see something at a distance. Because they're running late on. So you, when you go over there, you're going to see the K rails there, and then you're going to see the busted up K rails with tire tracks on the dirt stacked up next to it. So they're just rotating is what they're doing.
I've been to those K rails. So I do understand what you're saying. So I'll make it over that until tomorrow, we see what we can do about that, so.
Yeah.
How far, how far from Sierra, how far east from Sierra are you going? You're, I know you're going to, do the Locust? On Casa Grande? On Casa Grande?
So how far east we're going for?
Casa Grande?
On Casa Grande? So the limits of the restriping.
Yeah, it's just for that one area right there.
So, right, well, you're coming.
In relation to, in relation to Ferguson Park?
It's going all the way to Locust.
Yeah.
So, so we're doing, that, that's the limits of our, our.
Because the other part's been done already.
There, there's some minor changes that have to occur, I believe, at Alder, because of the lanes.
Yeah.
There's a westbound right turn. So all that will be restriped, and ultimately, it will be two lanes in each direction with light lanes.
Thank you, sir.
All the way to Sierra, hopefully. That's the goal.
Thank you, thank you.
You want?
Thank you.
Our person, our person, this is not in that area, but on Pepper and Edowanda, you know, one, on the east side of it, it's San Medina, I think the west side is Rialto. We got a stop sign there with a blank, but they run through that thing doing forty miles an hour. Have they throw, put a signal light there?
Edowanda and Rialto.
Edowanda and Pepper.
And Pepper. I, I don't know the, I know there's been.
We got a flashing stop sign there, but they don't.
Two lanes in each. To my knowledge, I, I don't know if there's a land signal there with, with the city of San Marino. But we can also look into that and see if there's any kind of requests that we analyze.
Thanks, sir. The other thing too, welcome our new attorney, Christie, Christ of the white. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here, as, as Colby had mentioned, we've worked previously. That means Rialto is in very, very good hands. So for the most part, I just get to sit here while you guys do all the work.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Don't pose. Thank you, thank you.